Okay, before we start, just let me explain how this is going to work. We have a microphone set up in the middle of the room. If you have a question or want to make a comment, please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and ask your question or make a comment, and we'll do the best we can to answer it. I'm going to spend about 10 or 15 minutes at the start. Just kind of... Oh, test, test, okay. I'm going to spend about 10 minutes from the start, kind of going over some background for you folks, some of it you may have heard before, but I hope it's informative. At the end of that period of time, the floor is yours. This is for public comment, for us to hear and get public inputs. And then, of course, on the 8th of March, this will be brought to a vote at town meeting. So let me start. Believe it or not, this effort started late in 2021. And the task force was put together at that time to update a plan that came out in 2005, which is the last time the town had put together a comprehensive plan. The original task force was put together with several things in mind. First of all, we wanted people from all over the town, geographically. We wanted people who were connected to important segments of the town, for example, the fishing community, fire rescue. We had a Realtor to provide insight into the real estate business here in the town. We had somebody associated with Harpswell Aging at Home. And we had people with planning experience, both on the planning board itself and coming from the private sector in previous lives, if you will. So it was an intentionally put together to kind of pull a lot of different expertise, information, and get us off to a solid start. The first few months of the plan, the process, if you will, we were just getting smart. We looked at the last 2005 plan. We actually tapped into each other's past experiences, got a brief from the Realtor, got a brief from the representative from the fishing community, so that we could all kind of understand what the perspectives were at that time. In the middle of 2022, we hired a consultant, Viewshed, and the consultants had experience with comp plans before, so we felt comfortable that they would bring a lot to the table. One of the first things they did was develop a vision statement. And for some of you that came in, you may have noticed that the vision statement is up on my left here. And it's, admittedly, it's a 10,000-foot view at what the town thinks is important, what they really want to carry over into the future. And that was really the anchor for this particular comp plan. So after the vision statement was done, which included, by the way, a public... After the vision statement was initially put together, we... And it was put together, by the way, with inputs from the community, and also admitting like this, much like this, plus a survey. So we got a lot of input on what to include in that vision statement. And if you do have a chance, please look at it carefully, because it really sets the stage for where we're trying to go and the things that the town thinks are important. Last year, we had hoped to bring this plan forward for town meeting. We had some public meetings, public hearing early last year, and we determined that that time, that there was enough controversy over certain parts of the plan, that we'd go back, pull it back from the public, from the town meeting process, and work on it some more, which we did. During the entire last year, we spent sort of systematically going through the document based on some inputs and concerns that were made, and we made some changes. We made some organizational changes to better emphasize what most people think of Harpswell, that is working waterfront, scenic views, open space, and those types of things. We changed and modified some of the land use proposals that were in there. And we also, along with the Affordable Housing Working Group, made some changes to our goals and recommendations relative to housing. I will be honest with you, housing has been a, you know, a hot-button issue, if you will, for a lot of the town, because it's very difficult to understand how you could have rural character, open space, while still accommodating affordable or attainable housing in the town. I've talked to landscape architects, I've looked at some of their documents. I personally think it's possible, but it has to be done carefully. And we have folks from the housing group here that could probably answer questions more definitively than I can. One of the big things I think that's important is, in order for this to work, we're going to need an implementation committee, a process that just doesn't die when this thing is over, but is a sustaining, standing committee that can look at the progress being made in all of these areas, report to the selectmen, and tap into all of the committees and so on in the town as necessary to track progress in all of these areas. The 2005 plan, for example, I think they got off to a good start, some good things happened as a result of that plan. For example, workforce housing was developed several years after that plan came out. But the sustained effort was really not there. And a lot of what was in that report was not implemented, largely because there was not a continuing process. So we think that that's something that we needed to add at this particular point. The final point I'd like to make is that... And you're going to hear maybe some disagreements from folks here on the task force. We voted on everything, and sometimes the votes were not unanimous. And, you know, there are strong feelings on certain topics one way or the other, and that's good, that's part of the process that we have to go through. But I hope that everybody will look at this thing holistically and not necessarily vote it down if you disagree with one or more of the recommendations that are made in the report. There's a lot of territory that's covered here, and I would ask everybody to consider that as they review the report and think about March 8th. So with that, anyone have any comments at this point? All right. I'd like to open it up to the audience. If you have a question, comment, floor is yours.
I'm Ben Wallace. I'm the Fire Chief for Cundice Harbor in the Ozon Bailey Islands. And I want to say, first of all, I haven't had the time or the bandwidth to keep up with the work of the committee, but I know it's been long and extensive. One of our greatest challenges, the fire service in Harpswell, is the change in demographics we've been experiencing. And a lot of that is directly related to affordable housing in town. It's probably one of the easiest things we could fix. I say easy, I know it's not easy, but it's probably one of the most attainable things we could fix in town. In Cundice Harbor, we have multi-unit housing. I don't know when the last time we had a multi-unit building built in Harpswell, but I suspect it's been a long time. I hope, I haven't had the time to review the comp plan, but I hope the comp plan does not discount the need for multi-unit housing. And I'll say it's because of several reasons. First of all, multi-unit housing is the most affordable construction we can put up in town. It's way more efficient than single-family housing. Single-family housing draws people from outside of town, that's great. It draws people that want to retire to town, I'm all for it. But what it doesn't get is it doesn't get us new firefighters. And that's where we're desperate. We're desperate for new firefighters. There's a $6 million proposal in town meeting this year because we're not recruiting enough firefighters. And if you think the $6 million fire station is the end of the line on the increased expenses in the future, and I tell you personally, from my perspective, it's not, unless we can correct the problem that we have. When I got started in the fire service, the majority of firefighters in the department were those that lived and worked in Harpswell. They could drop their hammers, their wrenches, they could stop working on that furnace, whatever they needed to do, and somebody dialed 911 could run out the door and put that fire out. That is not the case any longer. That generation is retired, and we're not getting people that do trades in town back into the fire department any longer. They're moving out of town when they get old enough to need housing of their own, because they can't get it here. So I'm going to suggest, and I think the housing committee has probably already done a fair amount of work on this, that we need multifamily housing in town. It is going to be the most efficient way we can build it, the cheapest construction we have, and quite frankly, it's going to be more likely to get people that have lived here their entire lives and need a place to downsize to in retirement, or people that are working still into that housing. It's less likely to get people that are coming from away to take up the limited housing we have in town. And as long as we use the maps that were made 20 years ago to show us where the water aquifers were, because I understand water quality is a huge problem in this town, and we encourage that construction where the water is, and someplace close to where they have access to three-phase power, it seems like we could focus that kind of construction there. What is a bigger impact to the view in this town when you drive down the road? Is it 10 new homes in single-family homes, or is it maybe two new three-unit buildings? I think the fewer buildings we have, the better, and I think we need to incentivize it. If we don't do something about it pretty soon... I'm going to be careful what I say. My hope is that the volunteer fire companies continue on forever because of the best value the town has got. But if we don't start getting some younger people in the town of working age that are going to join the department, they're going to go the way of the dinosaur. We need that workforce housing. We need affordable housing, and the best way we can get it is multifamily. I'm not talking about the stuff they're building in Brunswick. We have apartment buildings in Cundice Harbor, we've not had issues with them. We've got townhouses, we've got large apartment buildings. I'm just hoping people are willing to keep their mind open to it and not close the door on multi-force housing, on multi-unit housing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Comments? More comments? This is your opportunity. Yes, ma'am. Can you come up and... While this lady's coming down, I will say that the comprehensive plan basically voted to support the housing committee's report that was given to the select board in August. As I said before, that's sort of been a point of conflict among a number of folks, but that's kind of the position that we took, so it's in there. And it's going to require a lot more discussion and debate, because you might be requiring changes to the ordinances, and that's something that the comprehensive plan has not and cannot do. It's a series of recommendations, it's a guide to the future, it doesn't translate directly into law without going through a separate process, so... Yes, ma'am?
I'm Celestia, I'm from, they live down on Hillrith. I've read the comprehensive plan. I'm not in favor of reducing lot size or looking like Brunswick Landing, but I realize the fire department and staffing for our volunteer services are an issue. How would you make those affordable housing units earmarked for people that are going to fit those roles?
Well, anybody have any comments or questions?
Would they be first offered to those folks so that they would help fill our other need as suggested?
Well, certainly the housing folks, and I think most of the people on the comprehensive plan task force, think that anything we do in the area of housing should be for Harpswell people. And that's point number one. Point number two is that it's hard to put a condition, if you will, on somebody buying a house that they have to be, you know, less than 30 years old and, you know, be able-bodied and so on and so forth. So I don't know how to... You can't really guarantee that that's going to happen, but we certainly have a better choice to get younger folks in the town with less expensive homes, if you will, than we do right now.
What about the town having ownership of these homes and providing the housing for those volunteers and fire department workers? I'm going to go sit down, those are the end of my questions. I'm more inclined to see that kind of housing benefit all of us like that.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I don't know if my microphone is on. Is my microphone on?
Yeah.
I just want to make one comment, response to the first speaker. The zoning ordinance provisions that are recommended in the comprehensive plan, actually, they're in the housing report, which you wouldn't know were recommended in the comprehensive plan unless you read the housing report, because it's a separate document that was created by a separate group of people that's incorporated by reference in the comprehensive plan. Mr. LaGrove just said the comp plan is not a legal document, and that is true, but our zoning ordinances and the implementation program that Mr. LaGrove also mentioned, by law, must reflect the comprehensive plan. So you can bet that the, what I would call the radical increase in densities that are recommended by the housing report, will be very carefully watched by the housing committee, and if they're not in the implementation program, in the zoning ordinances that follow, there will be words had about that. We will be strongly encouraged to use those increased densities in the implementation program. With regard to apartment units, yes, there are chances to build apartment units in town that you're going to see on the warrant, that the planning board has already taken into consideration young families and accessory dwelling units, that those are going to be on the warrant article, and the board, the planning board said, yes, we should do that. Accessory dwelling units, being able to divide your house to create more affordable housing, those are at a scale that Harpswell can manage. Brunswick Landing is not. And with regard to apartment buildings, the housing report recommends that those apartment buildings, duplexes, townhouses, be built all over town in what is called the rural area. So if we build those things out, let's just take the West Harpswell School, the former West Harpswell School, for example. There are, according to the zoning ordinance provisions that are recommended in the Affordable Housing Report, the possibility of 38 single-bedroom units could be built on the West Harpswell School site. That's 38. If you're concerned about providing fire protection, you would have to drive a long way to get to those 38 units. It's a lot easier to put a fire out on a single-family unit than it is for 38, and you'd lose 38 units, not just one. These provisions have not been thought through, they're not ready for prime time, and I really hope that you will take a good, hard look and think about what they need for the future of this town.
Good morning. Thank you for all your efforts. It's been hard, Jus, I understand that. I'm a previous member of the Affordable Housing Working Group and currently on the Housing Committee. I would stand by the fact that Amy's current remarks are absolutely incorrect. Sorry. Sorry. Amy's remarks are incorrect in all ways, shape, and fashion. The property at the West Community School could possibly take seven single-family units on it to a maximum of 11. Single! Single bedroom units, whoa! So let's be careful with misinformation, and I'm going to call a colleague out purposely, because if that type of information is fluid, it's wrong. We, and I'm going to equally stay on this point, and I'm supposed to not be negative, but we, and I say myself, Select Board, Planning Board, Planning Department, have had the 2005 comp plan in front of us for 20 years. And if you go back and read the housing section, there was a committee set up in 2002 to go through all the issues. Now, I will tell you, I'm totally guilty of not reading that report until about a month and a half ago. Tis, tis, I mean, bad. I'm grateful that if the comp plan people had started there, that's that they had bases. But what is there is that all our departments have done us disarm. It says in that report, we should look after long-term rentals. And they advised us, if you don't, it will be gone. Long-term rentals do not exist today. It's a very weak portion of our ability to have housing, as our departments have alluded to. But I'm going to tell you that when I went back and read that report, all those departments, all those chairs had a responsibility to be doing just what is in our current report today. Gosh almighty, we could have saved ourselves two years of headaches trying to go through the current report we submitted to you guys, had we read that report to begin with. We have done ourselves a disservice, made our community more monotone, more non-diverse, and lost opportunity to have facilitated housing that is actually in today's report. Is it that there is an opportunity? One thing we challenged ourselves in the working group was the fact that we were not going to find a panacea of any one item. There's just, a lot of times you can cut at the boat ramp, one big item, and all of a sudden you're going to bring the cost down. There was nothing, and so we chiseled at little items, and we asked our community. But when I looked at that report of 2005 to our 2024 report, it's almost identical. This is our problem. We've done ourselves a disservice, and our boards have done us a disservice not to have paid attention to where we are today. We are less Harpswell today than we were 20 years ago. And to disclaim or say that single-bedroom units can't be built, that's, this is phenomenal. We're probably at the cusp of losing our youth in this community. Yes, ADUs are probably our best opportunity to get there from here today, because that's low-hanging fruit, meaning properties that exist and have acreage could build a second unit, and you could live in either the primary or the secondary unit. And you're allowed to put a second ADU on that property if it is coveted as an attainable housing, meaning that it's restricted. So there is opportunities. Is this going to change our land use and where and what's going to get built? Absolutely not. I mean, we're building 25 homes a year currently, and half of those are tearing down and puts up new construction. So it's not happening, it's not going to happen in Harpswell. Our waters are issued, our septics are issued, we're going to go slow. Let's not put or evade the fact that we do need some type of housing. Thank you.
I really want to, I really want to just say one thing. Please read the housing report. It's right there. I am not wrong. The report says if the total number of bedrooms is... If a unit will be designated as an attainable unit, the minimum lot area requirement for that unit should be reduced to 8,000 square feet per bedroom. Just do the math yourself. 8,000 square feet per bedroom.
Yes, sir, Dave. Good morning, you guys. Dave Chippman. I've been involved in, oh, I don't know, three or four comp plans, I guess, so far. The last one, when we tried to implement it, I was the chairman of the planning board, and we were looking at growth districts. And you have to understand that this, the comp plans are a suggestion. One of the things I find interesting about comp plans is all of the research that goes into the demographics and all of the things that are very educational. Trying to implement the growth districts with smaller lots didn't fly. I mean, we had to change the ordinances, and it was another set of votes beyond the comp plan. It was not accepted. And that's what you have to understand today, that what's in this comp plan is a suggestion, which we need to have a comp plan if we're going to be available for state funding or whatever we might apply for. So don't panic. There's another step, maybe two or three steps beyond this. And to answer the question about housing, oh, 20-something years ago, I was one of the founders and sat on the board of the housing trust here, and we built Hamilton Place. And a lot of local folks moved in there, and you'll see for a while, if you've changed jobs now, but there was lobster traps piled in front of one of those houses. You need to have a housing trust, you need to have things in your deeds to assure that it continues on as affordable housing. These things can be done, but, you know, the comp plan is the first step towards doing that, and that's my suggestion, you guys, don't panic. There's another, several more steps beyond this that have to get through public voting. Thank you.
I'm Catherine Goodrich from West Harpswell. I'm also on the Mitchell Field Committee, and I've been on it for four, maybe five years. So I'm over at Mitchell Field every day. Mitchell Field hasn't been mentioned yet as a location, but I understand it is one being considered for housing. And I'm for affordable housing in Harpswell, I'm just not for the location at Mitchell Field. I feel that we have a gem given to us, and it's something that needs to be protected. My career was a mental health nurse, and I think we all need mental health support at times. Mitchell Field is a beautiful place where one can go to get away from life's stressors and relax. It's a combination of so many wonderful things, a bird sanctuary, animal sanctuary. It's become a sanctuary for me to go and relax, and I'm just not for that particular location for the housing that's needed. Thank you.
Okay, just a query, response to that. One of the things that we did do, there were two areas, town only and areas that were proposed in the report that we did last year. One was at Mitchell Field, and the other one was off of Doughty Point Road. The reason those things appeared in the first place was because if the town owns the land, a developer could come in and potentially take advantage of that and build a house, build a... build an attainable or affordable housing, and still make a profit, which obviously that's, they're in there to do. So using town-owned land was one strategy that was considered. After we had some meetings last year with the public and the public hearing, it was very obvious that, that, people thought that was a bridge too far at that particular point. So the recommendations, I think, as I understand them in the Housing Report, basically say that we're, these are not in front of you right now as a town. But maybe in the future, the Select Board or people will take another look at it, and they might come to a different conclusion. So we're not completely throwing them off the end of this ship, but we're at the, at the same time, not saying that these are prime solutions at this point in time. The other thing I would say is that, I may be wrong at this, but Mitchell Field, Master Plan at Mitchell Field always has provided space for small houses as part of the overall master plan. And to my knowledge, that's still on the books as something that's part of the overall plan. If it's not, then maybe somebody could correct me on that, but that's my understanding. So Mitchell Field has never been completely excluded from that particular possibility, including in their own master plan.
Hi, my name is Cara Douglas. Ooh, that's a little loud. I am both a homeowner and a small business owner in town. And as a small business owner, I would be greatly benefited by having more attainable housing. And as a homeowner, I'm very concerned about our natural resource base. These things do not have to be mutually exclusive. We, I believe that we can do both if we do them well. Having read through both the Comprehensive Plan and the Housing Report, I find that there's some ambiguity that I'd like to clarify. The first is that attainable housing seems very loosely defined, and I'm not sure what that means. And I don't know what the process is to further define that and clarify it because something so ambiguously defined is not enforceable. So we don't have a way of measuring what happens once we have these units built. I think we need a little more clarity there. As a voter, I don't know how to support something that's unclear to me. So I don't know if there's any document that you could refer me to, or...
Well, the Housing for Harpswell Report, I think, defines attainable housing. Does anyone want to stand up and address that?
Hi, I'm Courtney Stallings, and I am on the Housing Committee. Anybody who knows me knows this is my absolutely least favorite spot to be in, in front of a microphone. But it's important. So let me say, we were, I was appointed to the Affordable Housing Working Group at first, and we struggled with trying to figure out, was it affordable housing, was it attainable housing? Affordable housing is... There are particular ways that the federal government and states define that. It has to do with your annual median income and what the percentage is, et cetera. And the folks that we are going for here are people who have roots in Harpswell, who work in Harpswell, young families, teachers, firefighters, regular people. And we decided because the income limits might not necessarily fit the federal guidelines for affordable, that we were going to use attainable instead. So those are the kinds of people that we are trying to provide places for. I've talked to small business owners who are having trouble finding staff. I've sat in on conferences for Coastal Housing Affordable Coalition, trying to figure out how we can do things that other people in Maine are also trying to do, especially as a result of LD 2003, which has told communities, "Please find a way to house people that are not necessarily the deep-pocket people." I did a little research yesterday. The median home price in Harpswell changes on a daily basis, I think. I believe it was, let's see. Don't hold me to this. I have, I've got my notes here, but I don't want to waste the time by going through them. I think it was, the median home price yesterday was $761,000. And let's say you have a household of two teachers. Average Maine teacher salary is $55,000. So they would have $110,000 to work with. You're not supposed to spend more than thirty percent of your income on housing. They would be able to afford a $420,000 to $480,000 home. So we can do the math. I was an English teacher, so math is not my thing. But I thought that was, I thought that was pretty dramatic. And I looked for rentals yesterday. There were two. Both houses, one was $3,000 a month, and one was $3,500 a month. So we would be doing the same thing that other communities in Maine have been doing who are struggling with this. Everybody's struggling with it. We would put covenants on any of the purchases that would keep them affordable. Do we know 100% how to do this right now? No, we don't. We are working very hard to talk to people around the state to find out what we can do. But I think, and I am from away, but I'm a part of this community, I think we are all here because we love our community. We want it to be the best community possible. We disagree on some of those ways to do it, but I do ask that we listen to one another and see if we can come to something that works. Thank you.
Incidentally, I don't know if you have this handout that you sent. Did you, did you get a copy? Okay, that might be helpful in some respects, but go ahead.
The follow-up question to that is, I have two parts to this question. The first is the proposed reduction in lot size for attainable housing. Is that something that, where is the data to support that? Is that something that the committee is envisioning as something new that has not been done anywhere before? Are there other models that we're drawing from? When we're reducing lot size, where does, is there data that is, that supports the numbers that are being generated by the Housing Group?
There is actually 20,000 square feet in the workforce housing, like, that was built for, well, actually, Hamilton Place, I believe, was technically affordable housing. Am I right, Dave?
Yes.
Where are you? Okay, thank you. But there is a provision currently for workforce housing for 20,000 square feet for a lot. It's just that they made it so complicated that it has not been used.
So, and I will sit down after this because I know there are others that have questions. The Housing for Harpswell Report reads this, we're talking about, just after the proposed lot size change, "The standards should require that a groundwater impact study be conducted as the initial step of the design process." This is looking at higher-density development. I know that the Comprehensive Plan is not a legal document, and I know that it is considered a suggestion, but I would very much appreciate if we changed "should" to "must." I live in an area where my well has run dry three of the past five summers. If there is more development, it will draw more from groundwater. I believe that must do these groundwater assessments is really important if we're going to bring in any amount of more development, but certainly high-density development. The plan also recommends that the best way to preserve groundwater is through forested areas. If we have a high-density development, can we, as part of that, make lot size smaller so the homes are clustered, but have conservation land surrounding so that there is a way, there's a built-in way of preserving groundwater, sequestering carbon, and maintaining the rural nature of the town? Thank you.
I just want to say one thing. When the recommendations came before the Comprehensive Plan Task Force to regulate lot size by number of bedrooms, I asked the town planner, Mark Ironman, where that idea came from. Because as a professional planner, I have never heard of it before. Now, it's been a long time since I've been in a professional planning office, but I'd never heard of it before. Mr. Ironman said that Gorham has it, that Brunswick has a similar provision, and that Gardner has a similar provision. So I did my homework. I called Gardner and asked them, "Do you regulate lot size by number of bedrooms?" No, they do not. I asked, "Where did this come from?" He said, "I don't know, but I would never recommend doing that, especially in an area that does not have public water and sewer," which we all know Harpswell does not have public water and sewer. He said, "I think it would be extremely confusing, and it would not serve the community." So that was Gardner. I then looked up Gorham's ordinance. I called Gorham, I called Gorham several times and never could get ahold of a person. So I could have misread their ordinance, but I did look at their ordinance. They do not regulate lot size by number of bedrooms. They do have an affordable housing overlay district, which I think Harpswell should look at doing. That would be something that would be very interesting. But their affordable housing overlay district is very small, and it's in their downtown and over by the university, all on public water and sewer. They do not regulate lot size by number of bedrooms in their rural area. In fact, their rural area requires 60,000 square feet per dwelling unit. Our ordinance requires 40,000. So then I called Brunswick. Brunswick, "Do you regulate lot size by number of bedrooms?" No, they do not do that either. So I don't know where this provision came from, but in all three communities that Mr. Ironman recommended he got it from, they don't do it either. So I looked nationwide. The only place I could find nationwide was in Florida. And you laugh, but it's true. I also sent last year, a year ago, a memo to the chair of the task force and to this gentleman sitting right beside me, a one-page memo expressing what I just expressed to you. Did I ever get a response back? Nope. No response. Nothing. And as far as the Mitchell Field and Doughty Point are concerned, they are in the Comprehensive Plan by reference. Mr. LaGrove said that they were taken out. In fact, they are still in the plan by reference.
Okay. I'm Aaron Fuge. You don't have any jokes or anything, do you? Aaron Fuge, I've been, I was on the Planning Board for eight or nine years. I now am volunteer on the Cundice Harbor Fire Department, and I want to second everything that Chief Wallace said. But the reason I'm standing up here is we should step back and try to understand what this process is. I mean, everybody is talking about the problem, and they're looking for, okay, we're going to talk about the Comprehensive Plan. Let's all get out the problem in the plan. Talk about, a couple of weeks from now, we're going to go to town meeting and try to vote on things. Let's step back. We, the towns of Maine are required to have a Comprehensive Plan every ten years, I believe. And that if you don't have it, then you're not able to apply for some kinds of state funding. So it behooves us to have a Comprehensive Plan. We also have ordinances, laws, to regulate how things are built and managed in Harpswell. Okay? We, we have zoning ordinance, and we have building ordinances, and that's what determines. And if somebody buys a piece of land or, and decides to build something on it, as long as they conform to the current ordinances, which also should conform to the plan, okay, in a larger sense, they can do whatever they want based on following the ordinance. So the plan does not require any, any lot to do anything. And that does not help us with affordable or workforce or you name whatever you presume you want for housing that people can actually afford. And the only way to do that is for the community to either own land, buy land, whatever, and set up their own housing units, if you will. Currently, whether we like it or not, the current lot size in the ordinance is 40,000 square feet for a single-family home. Correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, if you want to have a subdivision and have more than one house on that land, you have to have 80,000 square feet. Is that still true? Okay. So far, so good. Okay? So to put something in the plan does not make it happen. To put something in the ordinance limits certain things or expands them as we go. Right now, since, since the subdivision requires twice as much land, whether 40,000 is the right number or not, it's been there for many, many years. Whether it's the right number or not, there's no incentive to build anything but a few very fancy houses at 80,000 square feet on whatever plot of land you can find. And unless we change the ordinances, which will incur greater density, and unless we somehow, and there are programs around the country that have done this, where they acquire land, and then you can put covenants and income restrictions and other kinds of things. I've seen it done in New York where you sold the house at a below-market rate, but if somebody was going to sell that house, the town would recoup the appreciation. So in other words, it benefited the people to keep their houses up and get some of the appreciation, but some went back to the town should they sell. I mean, there are programs that do this. We don't have anything like that here. And then the next issue, so we're sitting here with a hierarchy. The plan is determined, the grand vision. The ordinance determine what's being done. And the town cannot dictate beyond the ordinance what somebody develops, a piece of land does, as long as they meet the requirements of the ordinance. Now, let's talk about aquifer. It is my understanding that we really don't have an aquifer here. We have, we're sitting on a pile of rock, and the rocks are cracked. The water comes down, fills the cracks, okay? So that means it's completely local, which means that, that it isn't like if you put another, another pipe down, you're going to reduce the aquifer, you know, more straws. That's what happened in Arizona, okay? But if it's, if it's, just locally, if like, I put one down and I hit my neighbor's cracks, I'm going to take some of their water. If I don't hit their cracks, I don't take their water. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Farley Miller from Cundice Harbor. I currently live in an ADU, and it's absolutely the only way that I could afford to live in town. And it was only possible because my mother said I could live in her backyard. And I think the town could only be benefited if more people said yes in my backyard, like my mom did. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
So I just have a question. If the original Comprehensive Plan was pulled back because it was, one of the most contentious parts was the housing piece, but now that very- parts was the housing piece, but now that very housing piece is something that you've said is still included in the plan, what changes have been made to the plan, other than only referencing it in a single sentence, will alleviate the townspeople's original concerns?
Okay, well, a couple of things specifically. Amy and I sort of disagree in the nuances here, but there were two areas in the plan that we put forward last year about putting affordable housing on town-owned land, Mitchell Field and Downey Point Road. We removed those areas from the maps, from the land use maps. The other thing we did was, there was another area off of Route 123, south, right around where the itty-bitty coffee shop is, maybe a little bit further south, that was listed as being multi-use housing, multi-use housing district. We removed that, because when you look at it, in essence, most of the town is multi-use. I mean, if you start from the corner of Mountain Road and go south on 123, you're going to see a church, a grange hall, a construction company. I think there's a beauty salon there. And you keep working your way down to the itty-bitty cafe and so on. So there are all different kinds of structures, businesses, other than houses. So to use a multi-use, or indicate a multi-use district by in and of itself, after we looked at it, didn't make a lot of sense and it was confusing. So those were specific things that were done.
I'll have to go back and make sure that the Mitchell Field thing is there, just for my own sake and, you know, seeing both sides of that. To the woman who spoke earlier about the change of should and must, I absolutely agree with that. If we are going to invite a multi-unit or of any size, whether it's two, four, 14, or whatever it is, I think we are absolutely doing all of those people in that unit a huge disservice by not ensuring that the water is going to be sufficient for a building of that sort. So I do think that that is a great idea, if this is going to be in there. That should be changed. Going to changes, is there still sufficient time to make changes in the plan?
I'm not sure that I can answer that at my pay grade.
So that would be no?
No, no at this point.
Okay, so it's seven. All right, thank you.
David, I should be exact. The number of bedrooms determines the size of the septic system, and therefore could determine the size of the lot if the soils are appropriate. And that's going forward, that's where ordinances come in. And in, to answer Kara's question, or suggestion, I guess, in the, in our ordinances presently there is the alternative lot size, which is what Hamilton Place was built on. There are tiny lots, but there is a common area that makes up, normally a subdivision would have a two-lot, a two-acre lot size. And so these are half-acre lot sizes with an acre and a half set aside in common for each lot. That's only ever been used once, and that was for Hamilton Place. It could be used anywhere in town if, you know, the salt. The other thing is, the HHS requires a hundred-foot distance between a septic system and a well, between your neighbor's septic system and your well. So that would be another thing that would determine lot sizes, where the wells are, where the septic systems are, whether they have a common septic system, a common well. And those are all things that we need to discuss going forward.
Thank you. Just to remind everybody, before Don comes up here, there's a lot more in the plan than just housing.
It is the most contentious part.
Agreed, but I just want to make sure that people have an opportunity to talk about things other than housing if they so desire to do so. Thank you.
Don Musco, Mitchell Field steward, chair of the Mitchell Field Committee now. Just to clarify a little bit, the original master plan from 2007 for Mitchell Field had a very large section about housing. But things have changed over time. When we did the update to the master plan in 2017 or so, that changed and was dialed back a great deal, and we moved more in the open space area. And I, like others who have said, you know, had a chance to just now get in and look at all those things, in Appendix 21 of the Open Space Plan has a specific paragraph that says Mitchell Field should be set aside, at least a portion of it, for open space. And so that's where the committee has started to focus more of their look. We haven't taken a specific position yet, but we will be looking at that. And we did meet with the Affordable Housing Group, and we're going through their process, but I don't think that we were sold on doing a large piece of Mitchell Field for housing.
Thanks, Don.
Good morning. I'm Anne Standridge. I live in South Harpswell. And first, I want to agree with my sister, Kathy Goodrich, that Mitchell Field is a gem. I do think it should be reserved as a park for our town. It is used by so many people in so many different ways. The second point I would like to make is, building houses depends on water. And my husband was a county commissioner in North Carolina, in a county that had no local rivers. And water was a serious problem there. Here, when we first came here to live here around, my husband came to a selectmen's meeting and asked how much water the town of Harpswell had. Nobody knew. I'm not sure they still know how much water we have. And the population of a town depends on how much water is available. In my husband's county, while he was commissioner, the county had to buy water from adjacent counties to supply their town population. And I think that is a serious problem here, because until she retired, the person who cut my hair was Vanjie Sparks, just up the road from us in Harpswell. And we were just talking one day, and she said that her water level had dropped. This was a good many years ago, which means, suggests to me that our own, our town water level is not what it used to be. And I think this is a very serious consideration that we should take, keep in mind. I think affordable housing is needed and needs to be very seriously considered, not in Mitchell Field, but in other places. One place I would suggest is the West Harpswell Schools, which sits there empty, and there is considerable land around it that could be used for housing. And then maybe the town should look into that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emily Woods, property manager. Born and raised, born and raised here, 34 years. Grew up fishing, New Dane Allen, my mom tuna-fished. Who you're proposing this plan for is me. It is me. Can't afford anything here, well aware. And so through this whole plan, and that we're voting on of, I don't knows, I'm not sure, nothing's here, no transparency, it tried to get snuck in during the short-term rentals. And the long-term is, it is real bop, and you don't need to corner me in the parking lot like you did the short-term rentals and yell at me. What I want to know is, what's the price going to be of the unit? Hasn't been proposed, hasn't even been answered. So to then put ADUs in housing, you're changing the view and the water and the septic, well the septic was an issue in short-term. They're there for a week, and now we want to do multiple-unit houses for people? I'm very confused. This is my generation you're speaking to. This is me, and I'm doing it alone. I don't have a husband, I'm doing it alone. So you tell me where the confidence is for me, when my generation and me are going to raise up in this town, can I even afford what you're proposing? Thank you.
Those are hard questions to answer.
What is the base, and you can propose it?
Well, if you want to, if you want to put a price on a house that doesn't exist yet, how do you do it?
Well, how do you have a plan? How do you have a comprehensive plan without a price for the unit, dash units, and stages? And why go through all this, and the zoning, and the construction, and the water, and the septic? What is price? What is price?
It's above my expertise to answer that question. There may be a few people in the room that can do that, who have had a job.
Do you have like 1,200, like you're running for the Isilian or what? What would you run at 900? It needs to be clear.
Again, this is, this, the Comprehensive Plan is kind of, is a vision, it's a guide to the future. It's not built or intended to be a source of very specific data like you're talking about. That's, that's not, that's not what the Comprehensive Plan is all about, so.
Hi, I was, also wanted to talk about the short-term rental. Some folks that couldn't be here tonight, or today, mentioned that there was a lot of language in the new plan that you guys are working on, the goals plan, which looks really beautiful. Just wanted to mention that, I thought that was nice. But there's so much language in it about short-term rentals, and I want to touch on it, because we had, there was a committee, or a task force, they called it, and there was a lot of, you know, people that objected to what was going on with that, and I just want to roll through some of these headlines here that I wrote down about that. So it looks like you have short-term rentals wrapped up in an issue with low-income housing. I don't think that it's fair to try to attack that particular industry. And that, that's my next point, is the industry in town seems to be changing a little bit. Lobsters are coming, packing their bags, who go in north. This new emerging industry is hospitality and short-term rentals, where people can supplement their incomes with that, you know, with their own, with what they have right now. And so that's, that's something that's, you know, and, yeah, and the other thing is about the privacy and the data. They wanted to build, you know, databases with names, and that leads to all sorts of, you know, issues, and why don't we do that with everybody else, every other, you know, business there is? You know, because then it starts, then you start adding fees on the people, and start attacking all these regulations. It doesn't seem fair for that industry. And then people have mentioned to look at Freeport and how they handle things, and I agree with Freeport as an example of what not to do, because that's exactly what they've done. Just like, you know, if you look at their documents, it's just non-stop fees and regulations for, you know, people are just trying to make it by. Yeah, and I also, if by chance you had, would be interested to edit some of that STR language in your document, and there was a cost issue, I volunteer my services, designer, and I can help edit or even rebuild that entire thing before the town meeting, if you, if it made sense. The other little topic on the side here, I was talking about, thinking about, I'm a problem solver, creative problem solver, that's what I kind of do. I had an idea called Water Boy. Water Boy pairs those that are in need with those that have. So you have feeders and consumers for water. Could be a pickup truck with an IPC cube and a particular loading dock that moves it from those that have plentiful water, like me, and moves it to some that are in need of water. And it could be transported in a pickup truck, nice and easy, loading it on a dock, just an idea I wanted to share.
Do you want to talk about short-term rentals? I guess that what we tried to do with the, with the Comprehensive Plan is recognize that there are lots of different aspects to some of these issues and problems. And I fully agree that short-term rentals are needed in many different respects here. I mean, it does support the tourism, tourist industry, hospitality, and are vital to us keeping that thing alive and well. I think what was, what we're trying to do is explore options to say, you know, what is the, what would the impact be? What is the impact of short-term rentals on the availability of housing? And I think it's something that has to be considered, not necessarily completely shut down. I think at this point, we have to consider a lot of different options. That's the whole point here. We don't have definitive answers on everything necessarily, but there are options out there that have to be explored. And that's really kind of where we are, and that's why we have a housing committee now. And, you know, they're going to do the best they can to work into this issue and come up with some recommendations. The town then is going to have to vote on it. You know, when you talk about changing ordinances and things like that, you can't do that without a vote of a community, so.
I'm Spike Hybrel, Harpswell neck. Full disclosure, I'm married to the person who has left the stage, probably because she's afraid of what I'm going to say. I want to go to what Al just sort of mentioned, which is jokingly, which is that, you know, there's more to the Cop Plan than just the housing. And I agree, and I've read the Cop Plan a number of times, as well as the Housing Report. And I think the Comprehensive Plan, away from the housing, is a pretty good document. It's a little loosey-goosey, in my view, and I've been through a number of these over the years. Sometimes, and I think somebody mentioned this, you know, what is the cost, and what is this, and what is that? Well, some specificity would have been more helpful to answer concerns that people have. You know, it's kind of repetitious, you know, these comprehensives, to say, here's what exists, here's a way to solve the problem, and then list, you know, ordinances that you want to mess around with. I get that's kind of how you have to go. It's a very laborious and long process, which is why it takes so long to get a Comprehensive Plan in place and then do anything about any of it. But I think overall, the broader aspects of the Comprehensive Plan are good. There's a, there's a major tension, though, between housing and a lot of the comments in the statements in the report that say, you know, rural character is important, the environment is important, water is really important. Everybody's made good points about water. We just don't know. But you do hear anecdotally about, you know, somebody starts to clear a lot for, you know, building one house or a couple of houses, and all of a sudden the neighbors say, "What happened to my water?" And it, you know, that's kind of, you can't deal with, once a horse is 50 yards down the road and going full-tilt. You know, you can't, you can't answer it, and you can't fix it, with all due respect, with a pickup truck and a tank on the back. It's a big, you know, we've got to stay ahead of the game when it comes to water. But I want to go back to housing just briefly, and somebody came up early on and asked a question about, how do you guarantee, that's the way I interpreted it, that the housing will actually be for people in Harpswell who live and work here, or just want to live here? And if you think about it, there are a lot of people in this town, you know, even though it's more and more of a retirement community, who live in Harpswell and drive to Portland. Never understood that. First time I First time I heard somebody's doing that, I thought they're out of their mind. You know, you live in Harpswell, and you're going to drive, you know, from the end of Bailey Island to Portland, takes an hour. Now, that's the same kind of thing that could occur with attainable, affordable housing. And I agree with the person that said attainable is just, it's just too loose. Honestly, I think, just as a side, we ought to use the affordable housing criteria because it's more realistic. It's something you can put your hands on and say, okay, well, this is what it should be in Harpswell. Will it work? Then you can decide whether it's going to work. But you will have people who come in and say, oh, well, I can rent this ADU, or I can rent an affordable apartment, but I'm still going to go to work in Augusta for the State House. So we don't have any control over that. It's very difficult to say, well, if you live in Harpswell, you can have this apartment. But if you don't live in Harpswell, or you don't work in Harpswell, you can't live here. That's not legal. So that's a problem. I'm not trying to criticize them, which is say, that's a problem that has to be dealt I guess the other thing was, this came up early on when I went to the first meeting over Cundy's Harbor, where we had a forum, and you wrote things down and put stickers on various, and I thought that was a really good exercise. But what occurs to me, what I really focused on a lot, and this has really come to us with COVID, and post-COVID, was the traffic that showed up in Harpswell. Used to be, go to the end of my road, and you could, and this happened again during COVID, right in the middle of COVID. I could stand out in the middle of 123 for 10 minutes and nobody went by. But once COVID sort of moved through, and everybody decided they wanted to live in Harpswell to get away from New York City, or wherever it was, I didn't dare step my toe out there into 123. So traffic to me is a major consideration. You know, they put in the four-way stop up at the back entrance to the old base, and my first reaction to that was, wait till summer. It's okay now. Would you wait till the high summer when you're trying to go to town? What that's going to be like? If we keep increasing the population, we send off something we can't necessarily control. But as the population grows in Harpswell, the traffic is going to get even worse. And we have three basic roads to feed people in and out of where they want to go, which is what we all say, I'm going up to town, because Brunswick is town. And so we have to be very careful with building concentrated housing units. Where do they go in town? And how many is appropriate? So that at some point, you know, overwhelm water, you don't overwhelm traffic, and you don't overwhelm people's sense of place. But anyway, I want to commend the committee. I know it's been, because she's back and she's listening to me, but I know it's been contentious at times, but I think you've done mostly a good document. I wish you could separate housing out and rework on it some more. Not redo it, but work on it some more. But I know it's too late for that. So I appreciate you having to take a lot of guff about the housing report, but it's real. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Unfortunately, the comprehensive plan in the state of Maine requires that you address housing as part of the plan. There are a number of things that are required by the state before they're going to say, yeah, this is a good comprehensive plan. The economy, housing, transportation is another one, public facilities, and there are a number of others. So that's why we had to address it, and we recognized also that there was a problem. And people recognized that there was a problem. We don't have, in the comprehensive plan, a solution. We have some suggestions for the town to consider as part of the future. So.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I know you have to, it has to be in there. You know, just kind of my wishful thinking is that we could work on the housing parts more and bring the comprehensive plan back to a special town meeting in six months and pass it then, so we can do a deeper dive. Because you've got a lot of input about housing, and maybe having it voted on in March is a little too early. That's all. But I know we have to have it.
I'm Bob Gidero again. I want to go back on one of the statements Dave Chipman basically tried to reiterate about the smaller lot and the single-bedroom to 8,000 square foot remark. And I guess I'd like to give an example that there is actually currently area-to-water usage in the state. If you have a 40,000 square foot lot, you're allowed to put a three-bedroom plus. You could put an eight-bedroom house on that. And basically, a three-bedroom house on a 40,000 square foot lot is 360 gallons. This goes directly in comparison to the septic system and the determinant of 120. I mean, it goes anywhere from 70 gallons per average day used to 125. But 120 is the average. So if the 40,000 square foot lot is determined to use 360 gallons of water, the rationale that we went through to say that you could build a two-bedroom or a one-bedroom was that it was anywhere from 12,000 down to 8,000 square feet. So the thing about saying, yes, we could have a restricted ability to have affordable, could be one-bedroom all the way down, if it's in a planned unit development that is 50% set aside for open space. So it's just like Kara said, a planned unit could be 10, single-bedroom, and that's a restriction, because now if you've got four people in there, that's not a single-bedroom. You may not be able to live there. But we're trying to make slices and dices to be real, so the water volume does not increase or take away from what our single-bedroom or two-bedroom opportunity is. It is already in our state health and human service code. So we're not deviating to say that Gardner and Brunswick and Gorham don't have it. The whole state has it already. So we're not deviating. And I thank you, Amy, for trying to split hairs, but let's be careful about what we're trying to do. This is an overall plan. Nothing's been done. We have to get it all approved through planning, through select board, all the processes we need to go through. Let's not kill, let's not throw out the bathwater gap. I will tell you, I own a home. I do not have a well. I've worked on homes in Harpswell, both North Bailey and South Oars, that used to have cisterns. We have gone away from, and made life easier because the well allows us instant water, but we used to capture our water. I have a house. It has 250,000 gallon capacity. It's all off of groundwater. I collect my groundwater, and I water my plants with that. There is abilities to go backwards and use what systems used to, or got some of these houses built, and they're dead. We try to now shed water away. Why don't we try to capture our water on each of our lots and to recharge the aquifer? We have abilities to reassess ourselves and not Debbie Downe everything we're trying to accomplish here today. I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
You can.
Okay. My name is Barbara Inglis. I live on, uh, my name is Barbara Inglis. I live on Harpswell Neck. I'm a Johnny Come lately. We moved here in 2017, where the people that you talk about who built a home and then used it a little bit and then retired here. So just to let you know who I am and where I'm coming from. You wanted some comments that weren't related to housing. I have a few, but most of them are related to housing. Number one, I think that your transportation section includes a number of ideas that are impractical. I have no idea how many electric vehicles are in our town, but having the town build charging stations for them sounds to me like a subsidy for the wealthy. As for a bus to Brunswick, I can't imagine there would be enough users to justify the cost to the town of purchasing a vehicle, hiring a driver, and maintaining it. Now, can I get to housing? I do understand a little bit more why you have to have housing in the comp plan. I'm going to agree with Spike. I think you've got a lot of stuff in the housing section that is still very, excuse me, contentious, and I think that we need to discuss it more. I think that having this meeting is awesome, but to have a meeting two weeks before we're supposed to vote on the comp plan really doesn't make sense. If there's no opportunity to make changes, to me, that doesn't make sense. I did attend some meetings last year, yeah, at Elijah Kellack Church, so it's not like I wasn't part of the process. Following up on Kara, as well as Courtney, I still don't know about attainable housing. It says on page 154 of Part Two, "Housing that is reasonably affordable for individuals and families who want to live in Harpswell but cannot afford the currently available housing." There are no metrics. There's nothing that tells me who's going to be the decider, and there's something that tells me who is entitled and who is not entitled. I did see in the FAQ, talked about 30% of income, but FAQ is not in the plan. This is the plan. The plan is vague. On page 10 of the comp plan, it mentions that Harpswell has a history of collaboration with neighboring communities to fulfill common goals and share resources. According to the MRRA annual report dated January 28, 2025, there are 1,470 units on the base. This is just the base. Phase two of the Jones Street, excuse me, development plan for the base to be finished by this June is going to add another 64 units. I know that the Jones Street plan has a set aside of 15% for affordable housing. So it seems to me there are units available in Brunswick that are within easy commuting distance of Harpswell. I myself, and I suspect many of those here today, did not have the luxury of living in the same community where I worked over my 50-year career, both as a teacher and then later as a lawyer. Second, I don't want the town to be involved in creating a loan program for housing and then forgiving the loans that the town provides. I think that's totally unfair. Let me see what else. Okay, there is, somebody else mentioned the short-term rentals. That was part of what I was going to talk about today. But basically, my problem is, what's the goal of the attainable or the Affordable Housing Committee, or whatever their name is today? Is it to build five units, 50 units, 500 units, as many units as we can handle in this town? I just don't know. I feel like that's part of the vagueness of what I'm looking at. And while I understand that you can't spell everything out, I think you all need to understand that this housing is something that is upsetting so many people in this community because of its vagueness, because of what it looks like or doesn't look like, because it doesn't take the water into account the way it should, although you've heard that was one of the suggestions for wording. I think we need to go back and revisit this a little bit more, and I agree with Spike. I think we need to work on it and bring it back to the town. But two weeks from today, I don't think is the right time, unless you want to see it go down again.
Okay, just, let me comment on just one issue. I think all those are very good points. Appreciate it. As far as having this meeting two weeks before the 8-March meeting, you're right, it's not a lot of time. But when we went through the process of lining this out, we had a public hearing on this plan last year, and this was considered to be a modification of a plan that already went to the town. And so because of that, according to the legal counsel that we got, we were good to go, if you will, to schedule this, even though it was outside of, let's say, 30 days, which would be sort of the minimum time that you would normally have a town hearing before town meeting. So I just wanted to explain that that's the reason we were allowed to go inside that window, and, but I appreciate your points.
Hello, my name is Heather Allen. I live in Cundy's Harbor. I'm also a business owner in the area. A couple of things. The legal counsel part for me is a little confusing. It just seems like common sense that you might hold a meeting in time to make changes as opposed to just doing it to check a box. Secondly, you mentioned, and I'm sorry, sir, I don't know your name, three kids, super busy, but I have read the comprehensive plan. You mentioned that the housing committee needs to study the effect that short-term rentals has on affordable housing. I believe that's already been done. It was discussed last year at affordable housing meetings and the short-term rental task force. So I'd like, maybe somebody can come up and speak after that that's on the housing committee. I do own a short-term rental business, so that's a full disclosure there. I guess I think my issue is, the short-term rental task force was created, and one of the issues was water usage. I fully support conservation. I want our town to all be able to use their wells, and so it seems a little bit hypocritical that there's a task force, I understand that they're not there anymore, but that was really focused on water conservation based on short-term rentals. And now we're talking about putting in a whole bunch of houses that would use water. It seems like there should be more study. It seems very hypocritical to me to be doing both at the same time and trying to put it in through the comprehensive plan. I also understand that housing has to be on there, but again, I would kind of mimic what the past few people have said, that there is a lot of contention about it, especially with short-term rentals, with studying aquifers, which we've had some meetings about recently, that there should be a little more work done before that part is put in, because I think it needs to be melded a little bit better together to keep our town with the water conservation. Short-term rentals are here. We want to be a part of the solution, not the problem, which I think, if you talk to any local person, we all have our laundry done elsewhere, all of those things, to try to conserve water. And inputting a bunch of buildings with the vagueness really concerns me, especially after going through last year and talking so much about water usage with short-term rentals. It doesn't line up. The thoughts are very hypocritical with each other. I think, I think that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Steve Colfield, and I live on Oars Island. I happen parenthetically to live in a 22-home subdivision that was cluster housing in 1986. We have a 19-acre set aside, and we have a common water system for all of the houses. But that's not what I'm here to address. I want to thank the committee for a lot of work on this comprehensive plan. Today's meeting was to pave the way for an approval on March the 8th. For over an hour, we've been discussing housing, which is critical to the entire community. That discussion has many branches and many issues that need to be resolved. The question I'm having in my mind today, will March 8th have a sense that the comprehensive plan is fatally flawed with regard to housing? And I would urge the community in introducing, introducing, excuse me, introducing the meeting on March 8th to reference this meeting that went into great depth on the issue of housing. There is a committee on housing. The comprehensive plan, in my view, is not fatally flawed with regard to housing, and I would hope on March 8th to get a vote for approval of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Aaron Fuchs, once again, going back to the way this system actually operates, anybody who, remember, we're conflating town-owned and supplied housing and private development. If somebody buys a lot and meets the requirements, they can do whatever they want within those requirements. It does not come down to pricing at this point. Should we ever get to the point where the town wants to take, for example, a piece of Mitchell Field and put up 10 units, then you can get to pricing and whoever's eligible staying within the fair then you can get to pricing and, and whoever's eligible staying within the fair housing law can use those, can have those houses available. If somebody wants to have a subdivision, and you can have a two-lot subdivision, you buy a piece of property and you want to put two houses. This is not the, the ADU, is that what it's called then? Separate unit? But if you want more than one lot, if you will, that subdivision ordinance says it has to go before the planning board. And the planning board has 50 or 60 criteria, which used to all have to be read out every time. But that's an aside. But anyway, one of them says you have to have enough portable water. And the other one says you have to have acceptable septic system. Now, the planning board has, in the requirements, in my experience, has not really pushed this, but they could. In other words, when you come and you say, I want to split the lots. I want to have four lots and four houses and I have enough square footage and everything else. You could say, okay, prove that you have water. Prove that you have, that you can accommodate the septic system. You have to prove that now, but because you have to submit a plan. But for the water, you can say, in order to apply, you've got to have a hydrologist come in and do what needs to be done. Now, I also want to say that the community, the town, does not employ any of these experts. Okay, that's why our tax rate is so low. So when, when we wind up taking the professional provided by the applicant word for it, reporting. If we want to get into something like that, we're going to have to hire professional services. You don't have to have them on town employee, you have a consultant, like a legal consultant. But you're going to have to put that in the budget and you're going to have to say, this is, this is important to us and we're going to buy this service so it can be checked every time somebody wants to do something. The other point that I want to emphasize, if you buy a piece of property and you want to do something and you stay within the rules, we as a community can't tell you that that's what you should be doing. Okay, you want to, okay, we do not have a design police. The only thing we're really talking is septic and water and setbacks and, you know, public nuisance and all those other kind of things. On, on short-term rentals, other communities have, have controlled this in some ways by saying it can be owner-occupied. So in other words, if you have a home and you want to rent out for short-term or you want to have an ADU that's on your property, you can do that. But what you can't do, and this is something that would have to, this is, this piss, one interest versus the other. You can't go buy up six houses and turn those into short-term rentals in our community and take them off the market, if you will, because it is much more lucrative, apparently, to have short-term rentals in your, on your properties. But that's something that would have to be done. It has not been done. We have no rule about it right now.
On your tippy toes now, Mary Ann.
I'm going to do this. Can you hear me? I'm Mary Ann, they've, I'm on the comprehensive plan committee as well, but I'm spending my time on the camera today. Also, as a member of the Conservation Commission, water always comes up. And I, I was thinking back to how we need a study to see if we have enough water. We have had two studies in Harpswell, just asking that question. And as Aaron so eloquently brought up earlier, we are on a fractured bedrock aquifer. He explained what it means, why we don't have this puddle of water that we know where it is. But it puts us in a position as a community, living with what we have and with no way, way of knowing whether or not you're going to have water or not, until you build, drill a well. I suggest if you buy a piece of property or you get the well drilled early. Jessica Meeks, we had the geologist, state geologist come down in September. She explained what the fractured rockographer is. And basically, it's the same thing. We have 7% of the water that comes out of the sky in precipitation is what goes into the aquifer. Everything else is lost by evaporation and transevaporation and runoff. It behooves us to keep our properties porous. It behooves us to keep vegetation on the property because that's going to absorb more precipitation. I guess what I'm saying is, living here, there is no direct way to know ahead of time if you put a house over here, they're going to have water or not. What it does mean, and what she, her big takeaway was, for example, we have just about the same number of people, actually a few less, full-time residents as we had 15 years ago. We're having people move in, but we have less people using the water because a lot of them are two people instead of a family of four. But when we're talking about water, we're thinking about the number of people that are using the water. And I guess what I'm trying to say is there has always been places in town that have had water, and Kara, I know you have. And to a parise it is that our best bet is not to focus on having another study that isn't going to give as much different information than we got from the first two, but to concentrate on doing our part of harvesting water and conserving water. It means keeping a lot of shrubbery on your property that'll absorb the water, less impervious surface. I don't know, but to put the whole plan saying until we can get definite use about water usage, I don't think can, well, I don't think can be done. And the town planner said the same thing. We can keep doing studies. We can study, we at some point can find out better, have better information of where the wells are located. And if people are having problems on them, the state is starting to do a study now to find out about where there are problem wells because they don't have a really good record. With sea level rise, that could affect saltwater intrusion. That's something that would be a good idea to start thinking about. Because as, the closer your well is to the water, the more chance you're going to have a saltwater intrusion. And these are things we've known, I think, all along. But I think a lot of work has been done, as a member of the committee, to try to flesh out all the areas of the plan. And it is, as Al said, a plan. You are not putting specific dos and do not because that's not the job of the plan. It's to find out, the people who came to the meeting, the first two meetings told us what they want and it's in the vision statement. And the, the word picture shows the value that was put on those items. And it was the working waterfront, which I hope the committee has worked hard to highlight that. And I think we have, Matt. It was also water. The Conservation Commission started to do some investigating and had the two workshops this summer with the state geologists and then with, with the water witches. So I think that everybody on the committee has worked very hard. And we've tried to address things in the broad sense so that when it gets to a comprehensive plan implementation committee, they have some vision there. It's up to them then to really start paring down what you want to do. I've talked long enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jake Lil. I live on Great Island. And I just have sort of questions and maybe a comment about what you said. When people move into town and they buy three acres of land and they want to develop into two, we don't have much say in what they do. If they drill a well and they get great water, good for them. But at what point does our town consider, well, great, the big new houses that are going in, their, their water's good. But they're not considering, and the town's not considering, what their water is doing to their neighbors. So it's not, for me, it's not enough to approve a house just because it has well water. Because we also need to think about what their, the consequence is on the other people around them. Okay, so I don't know how to do that, but that's a concern I have. And I totally agree with the recapture of resources. And I have not heard anybody mention composting toilets or gray water, better usages of gray water. So going forward as a town, when we approve new houses, even if it's a single house, going forward, I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way for us to put in ordinances or whatever requirements for any new structures that could build in town to have a water capture and a better use of their wastewater. Thank you.
Sorry, Bob Kadrugan. In reference to STRs, the housing committee stayed completely away from the term short-term rentals purposely and emphatically. We addressed it in one small section in that if you had a second ADU on your property and it was obtainable, that it could not be used as an STR. So do not inflict STRs on the housing committee's report or the Affordable Housing Committee's report. We stayed completely outside of it and we did not want anything to have or dictate with that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, it's been an interesting meeting. It's quarter or 12. I will ask if anybody at this point has anything more they would like to add or before we adjourn. I will remind everybody that the goal is to have this come before the town on the 8th of March. Undeniably, there are issues and so on in here that are complicated. But I would again, just ask people to take a look at the entire plan and, and look at it in totality and use that as a baseline upon which to make a decision.
Yes, sir. David, I, one more time, a couple of things. One is I, I don't want to hear the suggestions that our young people move to Brunswick. They take care of our affordable housing problem. Once they're in Brunswick, they can't vote here. They're not part of the community any longer. We need to deal with that. And also, I'm hearing around town, there are some negative things about that we need to vote this down. You know, don't. We need to, we need to have it. Please vote yes. We, going beyond this, there's more votes, there's more work to do. This is only a suggestion. We need to get it done and please vote yes. Thank you.
I just have one more comment. And that is to Bob's comment about they stayed away from short-term housing in their affordable housing. In the housing section, part one, goal four, page 59, speaks to limiting the conversion of existing houses into short-term rentals. So maybe it didn't come from the Affordable Housing Group, but it's definitely in there. This is not an issue that I chose to speak to. Other people did this morning, but it is in the housing section, page 59, goal four.
All right, anybody else? I want to thank everybody for coming out today. It's been a very stimulating discussion. And stay safe, everybody. Hopefully, we won't have any more snow between now and March 8th. Thank you.